Under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt. Mr. Beistall.
Here.
Mr. Calero.
Here.
Mr. Frye.
Here.
Mrs. Love. Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Shipley.
Here.
Mr. Benz.
Here. Let the record show seven present. Mrs. Love notified me that she was not able to make it this evening.
Mr. Alt also telephoned and indicated that he was unable to make it as well.
Thank you. Uh, citizens comment?
At a recent meeting, the members of the Southmoreland School Board voted for a budget that can contain a tax increase and can add possible millions, multiple millions of dollars to the next budget. We all understand that you're doing exactly what the union contract requires. No problem, we all get it. In my hand, I hold the current teacher's contract. This is a public document that tells all taxpayers why the board wants or needs a tax increase. When a teacher steps foot in the Southmoreland School District, they will reach the highest level of salary, presently seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars per year, and benefits in fifteen years. In the private section, sector, this maximizing progress process averages about thirty years. To accomplish this, in this contract, a teacher moving through steps eleven through fifteen will receive thirty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars just in raises to get them to the top. Thirty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars in raises in five years. The school board members who negotiated and voted for this contract have granted our teachers the following in the next five, in these five years. Averaging bachelor and master salaries, eighty-three teachers of whom will have, who have or will reach the top level of this pay scale during the contract. The cost for one mid-level teacher, salaries and benefits during this contract is five-hundred and thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. One teacher will cost five-hundred and thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. We can safely assume that one of these five-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar teachers teaches algebra, where our students make six days of academic progress in a hundred and eighty days of instruction. Other five-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar teachers teach biology, reading and language arts, where our children make three weeks' progress in thirty-six weeks of instruction. Now, including, included in these costs are teacher benefits. Let's look at some of them. We, the taxpayers, are paying ninety-two percent of their health care insurance, one-hundred percent of their dental insurance, one-hundred percent of their vision insurance, one-hundred percent of their life insurance, and up to four thousand five hundred dollars per year in cash if a spouse's health care plan is used by enough of them. And we pay millions and millions of dollars to pay for stunningly lucrative pensions. Since two thousand and five, the Southmoreland School District has paid out five million seven hundred and eighty thousand six hundred dollars in retirement bonuses. Additionally, this contract offers one hundred and thirteen supplemental contracts, two-hundred and ninety dollars per credit if a teacher wants to go on to school, and every year, they get ten paid sick days, two personal days, five days bereavement leave, and payment of up to fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars for unused days at retirement. This is for employees who work a hundred and eighty-six days per year, an average of a fif- of fifteen and a half days per month. As close as I can come, for the majority of our teachers, the average teacher salary in the Southmoreland School District is fifty-six dollars an hour. Calculating the very lowest level, and there are very few of them, just a handful, they, they make thirty-two dollars an hour. This is in a district where per capita income is about nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars a year. The teachers' union has a cadre of skilled professional negotiators who deal with your school board members to come up with a contract. As one PSCA negotiator said to me, Kathryn, when we deal with these school directors, it's like shooting fish in a barrel. These are the people that were elected by the Southmoreland voters and taxpayers. They got their wish. Now get out your wallets and be sure to send all the school board members except Ken Alt a thank you card.
Before we go into the business section of the meeting, I just wanted to call your attention to the plaques that are in front of you this evening. I just wanted to read out loud what they're all about. A lot of changes took place in the technology education department at the high school this year. There were two faculty changes along with the transition to the STEM, which is science, technology, engineering, and math movement. This came with a few new course options and career-focused activities within the classes, and more changes are yet to come in the future. One class change was the implementation of a mechatronics course. Mecatronics as a whole is a twenty-first century movement to modern manufacturing that reaches a variety of career options. The class had the opportunity to learn and utilize a computerized numerical control wood router. This machine takes a graphic image that's designed on the computer, generates a tool path, and cuts and engraves the material automatically. This is a small-scale operation that can be seen on the large scale in modern manufacturing setting, processing a variety of materials. Students can take these computer and machining skills and move on to a technical school and start working within a year or two after high school. As a thank you for the service and dedication you have for the students in the district, there's a small gift on behalf of the fourth-period mechatronics class at Southmoreland High School. So each of them had an opportunity not only to design this on the computer, but then to see it fruition. Very, very good example of what's going on in our STEM courses.
Yeah, they look very nice, thank you. Uh, Minitz?
Yeah, you'll be asked to approve the minutes of the May fifth, twelfth, and seventeenth meetings.
Any questions? Seeing none, business and finance?
You'll also be asked to approve the treasures report and the financial report from May two thousand and sixteen.
Questions?
The financial report, I believe, is here. The treasures report will be ready soon.
Seeing no questions. Johnson Controls, old business?
Right, Johnson Controls remains on the agenda as an item of old business. We're not ready to act on that yet.
Um, discussion of feasibility study?
Right, we had commissioned Echols Architecture to do a facility study. You were presented with a number of options and a great deal of information from Mark Scheller, and I've included on your board docs just the results of some discussions that administration had regarding this. We, we had a couple of meetings and talked at great length about it, and our belief is that option one, without the suggested upgrades that Echols was suggesting, is the best and possibly the only viable option. Um, we, we do support upgrading the electrical and the HVAC system at the primary center because of the age of the boilers and our inability to cool the building. We didn't like option two a whole lot because it would require additional new construction on this campus, and that comes at a pretty high cost. Option two also would make vertical alignment between grades K and one very difficult because K would be separated from one. Option two places kindergarten students at the high school. At the high school, there's no age-appropriate play equipment, no self-contained restrooms, no age-appropriate dedicated curricular areas for library, phys ed, art, or music. Uh, the rooms at the high school that are dedicated to those subject areas aren't suited for small students, and also they're pretty well-scheduled for the entire day already. Option two also places kindergarten students who have five-year-old issues and situations into a situation wherein other students have adolescent, teenage, and young adult issues and situations, including student drivers on the premises, a possibility of exposure to drugs and drug paraphernalia, exposure to adolescent health issues for those students who have to visit the nurse, exposure to fights such as the one that we all know about that happened in Cafeteria in March, bomb threats, and a host of other issues that are big kid issues and not little kid issues. Um, so there were some serious concerns about, about that option for us. Option three didn't look too bad, but we started to, to really analyze it and see if it could be made to work, and we, we came up with a, a number of problems and concerns that we had there. One of them had to do with the autistic support classroom. Uh, the, the age span there is three years, that's my law, and we would be out of compliance if only one autistic support class were in, in this building based on option three. Um, adding two classes would become a space issue. We are currently out of compliance with our autistic support class at the elementary school, but we do receive age-range waivers, which parents sign and the Department of Ed approves. With smaller students, younger students, that's not a real big problem due to their developmental state, but at the middle school, where, where students are entering their teenage years, we saw that as an issue, and that reconfiguration would create a shortage of two autistic support spaces at the middle school. There was also a shortage, looking at this option of one learning support space. We looked at self-contained bathrooms at the, at the current elementary school next door here. Kindergarten life skills support and primary artistic support ideally should have self-contained restrooms. There would be nine restrooms needed at this point, but there are only seven available. Um, in order to provide Title I reading space at, at SES, we would have to eliminate the teaming in the YMCA room or pre-K counts, which serves a lot of Southmoreland students. We would also need an additional space for a learning support classroom that doesn't currently exist. With a four, five, six, seven configuration, how, how would those kids be bused? Would they follow an elementary school, a middle school schedule, or a hybrid schedule? There was also concern about internal scheduling with, with bells and busing. Um, if K to seven were to ride the same buses, do we have enough bus space, or would, would more buses be necessary? Um, do we want, you know, seventh graders riding with kindergarten students and eighth graders riding buses with seniors? That's, that was a concern that we had. It may not be a, a big concern, you know, at the board level, but, but we thought it was. Um, parent pickup at, at this campus is already very, very congested. If we added K to two to that mix, it would add to the congestion, and it wouldn't be mitigated by the removal of eighth grade because too many eighth graders are picked up. Most of them either walk or ride buses. The majority of parent pickup occurs in lower grades, K to five. There's not sufficient space to provide a safe parent pickup area for kindergarten students on this campus. SPC provides actually door-to-door escort to ensure student safety. Staff actually, you know, puts kids in cars when they're picked up. Um, right now, parent pickup already impedes traffic both on the Scotty Way access road and on Chestnut Street, and it interferes with bus traffic as it is, so we were concerned about adding more vehicles to the pickup. The SES and SMS itinerant staff is structured to serve nine grades, K through eight. Reconfiguration would necessitate staffing for eight grades, so art and music would be slightly underscheduled in terms of the teachers compared to present levels, while art and music at the high school would be overscheduled. STEM and tech ed here would be underscheduled, and it would be overscheduled at the high school, so this would also necessitate combining gym classes due to the available gym space that we have. Um, the reading program at the elementary schools requires space for students to choose their leveled readers for independent reading practice, and those spaces aren't included in, in the reconfiguration plan. Uh, a need for an additional lunch period at the middle school to accommodate the additional grade level, that's not out of the question, it's doable, but it would have to happen. Um, our foreign language, science, and social studies teachers teach a partial seventh-grade schedule and a partial eighth-grade schedule. If eighth grade were at the high school, then each of those teachers would either be underscheduled or they would be traveling, losing periods of instructional time each day depending on how congruent the building schedules can be arranged based on, on our ability to bus and get kids where they needed to be at the proper time. Phys ed, foreign language, computer science, art, music, STEM, and core teachers at the high school are fully scheduled, and there's no space for an additional grade level. There's also insufficient gymnasium space to accommodate eighth grade gym classes without overbooking classes and intermingling eighth graders with older students. Again, music and art space for an additional grade level would also be a challenge. High school counselors and the school nurse would deal with an additional grade level whose developmental needs are somewhat different from high school students. Grades nine to twelve have a, have a system that calculates Carnegie credits and quality points and class rank. Eighth grade does not, and they're not considered high schoolers, so we would probably have to do something in terms of the guidance department to deal with eighth, eighth grade scheduling, and we really don't want to be in a position where we have to add staff. High school cafeteria would also require an additional lunch period. It's a rather small cafeteria, and it's pretty fully booked in all lunch periods right now. Um, there, there aren't enough lockers proximal and convenient to an eighth-grade wing. Um, there's not enough science classrooms and labs to accommodate an additional grade level, and finally, the commons area would lend itself to co-mingling eighth graders and upperclassmen. In other words, children versus what in some cases are young adults. So we saw a, a number of problems with option two as well, or option three, excuse me. So our thought was that option one is, is still the most viable option, and we would still be interested in looking at, if nothing else, a boiler system, but we, we obviously, you know, think that, you know, as hot as it is here right now, it was a lot hotter over at the primary center today, so we would still like to, you know, look at the air conditioning, the electrical system, and the, um, the boiler system. Uh, the other improvements that Mr. Scheller mentioned would not be necessary in terms of the renovations that we're looking at, in terms of the thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars that he was talking about with upgrading doors and latches and all of those kinds of things. So just opening that up for discussion, I don't need to make a decision tonight. Can, I guess, because you're not voting, but those were our thoughts after an analysis of, of, uh, of the facility study.
Anybody have any input? Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask my team down here, we all were a part of this, if anybody, you know.
I know the, the, a lot of the issues are not related to additional staff, they're related to logistics and moving children from one place to another, but in dealing with additional staff to accommodate some of these changes, have we done the cost analysis of if we don't have the school anymore and the additional savings we would have by moving everyone into just the two buildings?
We weren't proposing adding, adding staff.
Well, I'm saying, no, no, I, I understand that. What I'm saying is if you, if you needed to add, let's say, another teacher for language, okay, would that be offset by eliminating a lot of the administrative costs of having another school building and having all the administration that we have there, secretaries and principals, and like I said again, I, I, I mean, I understand that there are some things that are not money-related, and I can appreciate those, but there are some things that could be eliminated by putting money in, but that money would be available if we no longer had to support that other school.
We did not do that analysis, we can, simply because our, our thought was rather than add staff, we would be traveling staff.
But if, but if there was sufficient money saved...
By adding staff, and you have staff here that's underscheduled while we're still putting more staff on somewhere else, and that just didn't seem prudent in, in our thought process. We can certainly look at that.
Or all of the, then, then my next question would be like, for example, with the language arts, it, it is not possible to schedule so that your language arts are available when the eighth-grade students, for example, might need one particular language. You can't schedule, there's no way to schedule. They, they have to actually travel from seventh grade at one location to the eighth grade at the other. We can't use teachers to teach the eighth-grade language without physically moving them and...
In my mind, high school teachers are, are fully booked.
Right, and that's what, and this is what, exactly what I'm getting at, I'm saying if you had another high school German teacher or, or French teacher, then you would not have that issue. They would be available at the eighth-grade level to teach at the high school. You'd be adding a teaching position in exchange for eliminating how many positions at the other school.
Right.
I mean, again, that's, like I said, it's not only finances, but that's one of the big issues, and again, I'm not looking to add expenses to the school district, but we'd be eliminating a lot of expenses by eliminating the school.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to pull the analysis, I think, of what the building actually costs.
Right, and what, and what would be savings on, on staff.
In terms of the physical plant, in terms of staffing, um, teacher-wise, you're probably not gonna be saving.
Exactly.
So it would be a, a matter of...
Administration.
Couple of secretaries and a principal perhaps.
And, and also janitorial and...
Right.
And all the other staffings. I mean, again, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars that come to, but it may more than cover having an extra teacher or two at the high school to teach the eighth graders. But, again, I just brought that up.
Right. We'll, uh, we'll cross that out.
One concern I had when you were reading your report was, um, you saying about having to mix the eighth grade in with the high school kids doing their gym classes, and it just doesn't seem very prudent to have eighth graders in with the high school kids in the locker room when they're changing clothes and all that sort of thing. And a lot of people might look down on that. I don't know what anybody else thinks, or anybody else has any other thoughts?
We, we saw it as, that as a concern.
Anybody else have anything to bring up?
The only thing is like...
Mr. Clark?
One of the things that you said, though, when you have a, when you have a middle school, sometimes we have seventh, eighth, and ninth graders, and when you, some school districts do seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, and then do tenth, eleventh, and twelfth as the senior high, so there are other places that have eighth graders in with ninth graders. Granted, I didn't with tenth, eleventh, or twelfth graders, but they're still in with ninth graders, and, and again, it, it just depends on where you want to draw the line, and, you know, I'm not asking for a fourth grader to be in with a high school student, but we're talking about eighth graders certainly being closer to maturity than you would see at someone at the sixth or seventh grade level, so.
I do have one question. When you were talking about, you know, backgrounds in food, and some always think about food, but you were talking about the cafeteria, adding one more lunch period, potentially. Where? I mean, when?
Uh, Vince and Dan, Croft, I'm willing to answer that. Adding a lunch period here and a lunch period to the high school, what would that look like?
I mean, would we have kids eating lunch at nine-thirty in the morning?
Middle school kids would be eating either really early or really late. We're, we're already, our last lunch ends at one, so we would have another lunch happen at half.
And what time does the first lunch start?
Eleven, so they would be eating a little after ten.
Okay.
How about the high school, Dan?
We would maybe say, we, we actually have a four lunch schedule. First lunch started at ten, ten.
And they start school at what time?
Seven-thirty, five.
And they end school at?
Eight, twenty-four.
Ten, ten. Would the eighth graders start at the same time, or would they start later? Would they start at the same time as the high school students do? Do you have a planning on that?
I would imagine that they're going to the same destination, so Charlie, from your perspective, from a busing perspective, you would want the kids from one building being dropped off at the same time, right?
Yeah.
In terms of busing and dismissal and things of that nature, they would run that schedule. If they weren't, um, then we have either a period, well, that and a period at the end of the day, or a period at the beginning of the day, that's longer for some of the itinerant teachers...
Right.
Who would be covering those, those students.
So that could potentially increase the issue that we had a few weeks ago with kids stopping into the cafeteria grabbing snacks in lunch periods that they don't belong.
Right. Vince?
I would address an issue about eighth graders being in the high school. I came from a previous experience of getting eighth graders into a high school setting, and even in vigilant as we try to be, junior, senior students try to get on the younger students, and it feels very problematic, and whether or not you think eighth graders are mature enough, they're still, I mean, when they, when they first enter eighth grade or ninth grade, they're, they're still little kids, and to place them in a situation with adults, I, I really, from my past experience, that was very problematic, when you have a new eighth grader, which is basically just seventh grader that just turned eighth grade, placed in a situation where they're being confronted with juniors and seniors trying to get on, it was, it was, it was very uncomfortable to watch that happen.
Did you see that there is a big difference then between an eighth grader and a ninth grader? Again, whoever's the low man on the pole is always the one that's gonna get picked on, regardless of whether it's the seed or the eighth grader, or the seed or the ninth grader, it's always the last one in that, again, but did you see a big difference in the maturity level between an eighth grader and a ninth grader that you'd say, well, I really don't want that type of activity going on?
I think once they got into the high school setting, there wasn't a difference in the maturity level because they were simply more with older students. And to place a younger student in that setting, at least in my experience, it was problematic.
To me, I think it's a bad idea because you're pushing these kids so fast through school, they're not gonna pick up the morals and everything that they need. Pushing them in with older kids, they're gonna be in trouble more often, and just like adding lunch periods and taking lunch periods, how do you expect the mind to operate when it's hungry from in the stomach, even in late in the afternoon or early in the morning? You, these children are still kids, and they have to have nourishment. They have to have something to make the brain move, and to eliminate or make them so hungry at the end of the day that they don't want to learn, all they want to do is go out and eat, or early in the morning. I, I, to me, I can't, I can't sit, I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel.
Anyone else? Anyone down on the floor? Seeing none, uh, just wanna keep on the table.
Sure. Quick question.
New business, Adelphi Education Services?
Right, uh, you'll be asked to approve a contract with Adelphi Education Service to provide private academic school for emotional support students and also alternative education for disruptive youth. Daily costs are as follows. Alternative ed would be seventy-nine fifty for regular ed students and eighty-seven fifty-three for special education students. Um, that's a two dollar and thirty-two cent increase over the current year for regular ed students and two fifty-five over the current year for special ed students. Private academic for emotional support students is one forty-eight fifty for regular and special education students, and that's actually a reduction of sixteen dollars and forty-eight cents from what we're paying this year. So we would ask that you would approve that as well.
Any more questions? Seeing none. Uh, NHS letter of collaborative agreement?
You'll be asked to approve a letter of a collaborative agreement with NHS. This doesn't cost, uh, cost us any money, it just says that they'll comply with HIPAA regulations, and they're available to consult with us and obtain approval prior, prior to coming into our schools, and just things of that nature. In other words, it's our, our relationship agreement and how we operate with each other. It's pretty much the same as it has been, but they're required to update it periodically, so we'll ask to approve that as well.
Agreement with Chestnut Ridge?
Right, Chestnut Ridge Counseling Services for the provision of educational services to students who are enrolled in New Directions Partial Hospitalization Program, and we occasionally have a student there, it's in Union Town, and we try to minimize the number of students we're sending to Union Town. It's much less expensive to send them to Greensburg because we already have transportation going that way, and they can piggyback on current transportation. Daily rates that they're asking, seventy-eight fifty a day for regular ed students and eighty-six fifty for special education students, and that is an increase of six dollars and fifty cents a day per student.
Any questions? Seeing none. Cafeteria prices?
And Mrs. Huggins is going to discuss cafeteria prices with you and request that prices be increased for lunches by fifteen cents, and the reason for that is more legal and regulatory than anything else, correct, Mrs. Huggins?
Yes, and I'm helping with a free kids act, went into changing all the lunch, the meal regulation several years ago. Part of that new regulation was something called paid lunch, paid lunch equity, which requires that we study the meal prices annually and come up with a baseline price, and the whole gist of the study is so that we ensure that reimbursements from federal, federal reimbursements are not paying for paid meals. So when we did the study for this year with technical assistance from PDE... So when we did the study for this year with technical assistance from PDE on the worksheet, and mind you, the worksheet is kind of complicated. It has six different tabs and it almost takes an accounting degree to figure it out. PDE helped us use state reimbursements to cover any lunch price for the fifteen, sixteen school year. But I included one page of the tool in the packet, which shows the calculation for this year. And if we actually followed the recommended price increase was twenty-four cents, if I'm seeing that without my reading glasses. And so we're requesting fifteen cent price increase. And then possibly what we'll do in the coming years after that is, again, do the study and see if we can continue to apply some state funding towards any increases in the future. But the last time we raised prices were four years ago. And I also included a copy of the Westmoreland County study, which shows the pricing for all schools in Westmoreland County. We're pretty much one of the lowest pricing, even with the increase we still will be.
In other words, the whole idea here is we have to ensure that federal monies that are earmarked for free and reduced lunches are not subsidizing students who are paying for lunch.
Right. Yeah, that's a whole part of it. And reduced prices will not be raised, and neither will breakfast prices.
Right, so, and our current pricing was not allowing that to happen, so we were supplementing that with.
We supplemented that with some of the state funding we receive for this year. We supplemented that in the past year.
Questions for Mrs. Huggins?
Mr. Claro?
Lynn, just because it just makes more sense, why don't we make it two and a quarter and two fifty? Just because mathematically it's so much easier to deal with.
We can do that, and we've done it in different increments, I guess, to reduce the burden on families would be.
I would think the ten cents or the, in that case, the other fifteen cents, just again, just logical for you to deal with the exchange of money, and then that would give you a few extra cents so that you would have that in your budget for the next go around.
That's true, and it's possible that we could do that. I know one year we raised a nickel and we didn't have that much of an issue. And many people pay online anyway, so we're taking the money right out of the point-of-sale system. So there's some exchange, but many parents pay by check, and so it's not too, too much of a problem.
There were actually very few kids who were bringing lunch money on a daily basis.
They do.
Yeah, the online payments have really increased.
And they punch in their numbers and draw from an account.
And even if they do, if they bring in twenty dollars, that amount remains in their account, so it's drawing from that as opposed to us making a ton of change every day.
Any more questions? Seeing none, thank you, Lynn. Do you want to put that on the agenda for next week? Do you want to go with the fifteen cents as recommended, or?
Yeah, I think I'd like, I'd like to go with fifteen cents.
Okay. Policy on service animals?
Now, we currently do not have a policy on service animals entering the schools. And service animals are becoming more and more prevalent, and without a policy, we can have chaos. So we thought it would be prudent prior to the beginning of the next school year to put a policy in place. I chose policies from, or downloaded policies from, I think, four other districts, read them and kind of combined them, and I apologize for the formatting. I'm not a formatter or a typist by any stretch of the imagination, but the information is in there. Basically, it says, you know, we want to protect the health and well-being of our schools and community and maintain a safe environment. We understand that some students and staff may have allergies, that animals can also, you know, spread disease and behave in dangerous or unpredictable ways. But we also understand that individuals with disabilities, by federal law, I believe, are permitted to have service animals in public areas such as schools. And we certainly would not want to deny anyone the benefit of their educational program by denying them a service animal. So we have the definition, and talks about a service animal being an animal that's actually trained to do work or perform tasks, dealing with anything from blindness to deafness to autism to epilepsy to diabetes, those kinds of things. And then we put a proviso in there that the provision of emotional support, well-being, comfort, or companionship does not constitute work or tasks for the purpose of this definition. The last thing we want is everybody bringing FIDO to school because we all love FIDO and want to pat FIDO on the head on spelling test day. So we don't have any desire or need for that. The next section talks a little bit about approvals, you know, by administration and getting approval. Talks about pets being prohibited on school property with the exception of service animals. And persons with disabilities have the same right as the able-bodied to use and enjoy the school. So then, moving down, we have standards to apply. We're asking, you know, that the animal be trained and certified, and not just because, you know, mom or dad says, well, yeah, we trained the animal. We want a trained animal with a certificate from, and accredited kind of trainer. We need a health certificate, and we certainly don't want a sick animal or a flea-ridden animal, or an unvaccinated animal here. We're asking that the dog wear a harness, identifying it as a trained service animal. We're asking that the animal and its handler be certified for public access. And we want the animal and the trainer both to have that kinds of training and passing the standard public access test. Again, it's just to keep everyone safe. With reasonable accommodation, you know, we don't want the animal to be disrupting the education of another student. The animal can't pose a health or safety risk to other students. We would want to be able to talk with the individual who has the service animal and determine the best way that animal would be used in the school environment. And then we would also want to educate those who are not using the service animal, how they're to interact around the service animal. It's not a pet, it's not a toy, it's, it's a working individual and needs to be treated as such. The IEP team would, you know, obviously make those determinations. Then the school would need to consider, you know, a rest place for the animal. The animal might need a timeout. Rest times for the animal, because gym, lunch, recess, those kinds of things are tough for an animal, just as they're hard on some children with disabilities, the noise and the confusion's hard on them. We'd want to talk about, you know, how we're handling emergency evacuations and fire drills and, you know, how we're going to treat the school to reduce allergens. You know, an alternate plan in the event that the primary handler's not available in case the child isn't the primary handler. Training for aides who might have to, you know, handle the animal. And then it outlines, you know, who's responsible for the animal. The owner or handler is responsible for supervision, care, feeding, exercising, cleanup, stain removal, making sure the dog, the animal's leashed or restrained. Damage to buildings that the animal might cause, injuries to students and volunteers and visitors that the animal might cause, and annual submission of vaccinations and immunizations. And then there's a section about appealing a denial and how that might be appealed in terms of the law. And finally, admission to public events, and then the definitions. So I thought we needed to get some kind of a policy. I tried to pull one together. David has not reviewed this yet because we were kind of working on that this week, so I'm sure David will have some thoughts, and we would certainly entertain thoughts from board members as well. If you happened to read this week's Tribune review, I believe it was two or three days ago, a neighboring township is having an issue because a young lady has a service chicken. And the chicken provides her relief from some anxiety that she has. There's an actual picture in the Trib of the young lady with the chicken on her shoulder. And so we're trying to get a policy so that service animals that might enter our schools are bona fide trained service animals and not service chickens unless they happen to be trained as such, I guess, I don't know.
There is a gimmick on, I saw on TV where people were getting doctor's excuses to take their pet pig on an airplane and other kinds of animals that you, you know, don't think of as being service animals. And my question is, is there any? I mean, I'm thinking that these would be dogs, but the definition leaves open to other animals. And my question is, you know, are there trained, other kinds of trained animals for people who are blind other than dogs?
Well, one of the policies that I read actually specifically addressed miniature horses. So apparently miniature horses can be trained as service animals. For example, an on-ambulatory student who is in a carriage of some kind might have a miniature horse that gets him from point A to point B. And there was a whole litany of how the miniature horse was to be handled. I did not include that specific thing in our policy that's being proposed because I didn't want to include horses, dogs, cats, sheep, birds, ducks, goldfish. So I put everything under animals.
Should they be excluded, is my question?
I don't know.
I think that's going to be our discussion.
If the, you know, I would think if the animal is a bona fide service animal that is trained and certified and all of those things, I'm not sure we can, Dave. And, you know, you're the legal mind there. But Dr. Snyder, you might be able to jump in, you're but under ADA and all of those things. I think the law says service animals, it doesn't say service dogs.
My experience, though, has been mostly dogs, but every policy that I've seen in other districts has set animals instead of dogs.
Right. And I think the proviso, that, you know, we're pretty specific in stating that there has to be a need, that's a demonstrated need, approved by the IEP team, physician's excuse, you know, psychologist, psychiatrist, whatever, part of the evaluation that the animal is needed. And the proviso that the child, the animal is not just for comfort and emotional support, but rather a guide dog, a hearing dog. We do have students here, and I think one of them does have a service animal that he or she uses at home who suffers from diabetes. And the dog is able to detect a difference in the child's breath or odor or something and know when the child's sugar level is too high or too low, when the child's reasoning might be impaired by that sugar condition, by the diabetic condition. And the dog alerts either the child or someone nearby that we have a problem here. And I can see that as something with some of the students that we have that would be of benefit here. I do know we have a student who's severely visually impaired, you know, walks with a cane. He may or may not at some date be a candidate for a seeing eye animal. But right now, we have nothing. So having nothing, bringing your gerbil, I guess, I don't know. But, so we need something.
Two thoughts that's required by law, federal, state law?
Yes.
That a child be allowed to bring a service animal to school?
I believe it is.
The second thought is, I was faced with this about a decade ago. Family moved into our district, and you come across all kinds of crazy things late summer when you're preparing your, you know, your school busing schedules. I got the call from the bus garage that, you know, there was a parent who wanted the child's dog to ride with the child and be with the child all day at school because the dog can sense when the child is having a pending seizure. Well, we had no policy on it at the time. I don't think it was required to do it, so we just flatly said, no, we're not, we're not doing it. Child came to school anyway, we had no problems. And eventually they moved away, and I forgot all about this issue. So, but you might want to touch base and look at this from a standpoint of a parent asking that this service animal ride the school bus with the child. If you don't own your school buses, you contract with groom slash quest to do it, then what's their thoughts on, on, you know, a dog or other service animal riding with that child at school? So just throw that out there for you. Mr. Claro?
I'm looking down here at the references. Five oh four, the Rehabilitation Act, Americans with Disabilities Act, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Disability, Title 28 Code of Federal Regulations, EEOC Regulations. So that there appears to be a lot of legislation and regulation dealing with these.
Mr. Claro?
I'd be a little confused because we're saying here that the provision of emotional support, well-being, comfort, companionship does not constitute work or task for the purpose of this definition. And I would agree with everything after emotional support. But emotional support could certainly be considered a disability, and it certainly would be discriminatory not to allow someone to have a service animal for emotional support. Am I correct or not correct?
Well, emotional support in itself is not a disability.
But, but.
Anxiety, your depression or something.
Which is what you're, which is exactly what you'd be dealing with. You wouldn't, they wouldn't come and say, I need emotional, they'd say, my child has anxiety, depression, and so then you would be dealing with that, and you couldn't discriminate.
Right, and that's why I think it's so important to have a policy because you need to have clear parameters to deciding that this child needs visiting. Has to come from a medical professional. The animal has to be certified.
So technically, we view with emotional support, we could be dealing with someone that doesn't have a physical disability. It could be a psychological disability, and we'd still have to then provide them with that type of a service.
And that's where I think we need to look at, the legal ramifications of, probably denying somebody that had an.
Right, yeah.
Maybe right now at college, you know, a student who was scared of anxiety was the.
Fall, he falls under the ADA Act, who has an emotional support cat. And who, literally, the cat's in like a little backpack that he, she's, she, the cat's with him all the time, and that's what keeps the kid on the right track.
So the, maybe we need to change the wording in that clause.
And get some further clarification as to what, yeah.
Emotional disability versus emotional support.
Thank you.
In other words, you know.
Right.
I don't have a disability, but I just, I like my dog a lot.
Right, exactly.
My dog makes me happy, so I'm going to bring it to school.
They have to have a diagnosed disability.
They have a diagnosed disability.
Right.
And we do have students who are unable to attend school because of anxiety issues. You know, so maybe, maybe the support cat might get a kid in school, you know?
If you put a thing in there that says "asked by the Americans with Disabilities Act," I mean, if you would add, I was just thinking, if you would add that in there, it's not our definition, it's theirs.
Right.
And then that very much clarifies what we're looking at.
Yeah. Good points, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Thank you.
So we'll clean this up a little bit. We'll try to get the formatting in a little bit better shape, but certainly take into consideration the comments, that all makes a little bit of sense. Administrators, do you have any other comments? Told these guys I was going to make them participate tonight here a little bit so they don't just sit there and get real bored.
Budget discussion? You also tend to get bored.
Sure. Maybe not. Yeah, Mr. Marnell, do you want to talk a little bit about where we are on the current budget? And then I have some options for you that we may or may not want to discuss in terms of some ways to either reduce costs or increase revenues. Jimbo, we'll turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Moller. We launched a proposed general fund budget on May 17th. You approved that as the official starting point as we work towards final adoption. You received your budget book binders, and in the front of the binder, I put in the PDE form, the official form that the budget must take. And I notated on the budget that it is a proposed final general fund budget. Unfortunately, in the state programming, there's no such tab or report cover that comes out that says proposed final budget. Their program is geared towards the Act One budget timeline scenario, which is in, you know, January, you do a preliminary proposed budget, and then at the end of the year, you do a final budget. You don't, we elect to skip the Act One process by committing ourselves to any potential tax increase, we'll stay within the Act One index, and that allows us to go down the traditional budgeting track, which is to, you know, adopt a proposed budget in May and then a final budget in gen. So that's the official proposed budget is in your binder. Of course, the administrators and secretaries are reviewing the numbers, and, you know, discussions are. are continuing to take place. Just always remember, no budget is stagnant and, you know, there's always changes and there will be changes for our final adoption on June 16th. I want you to take a look at a section in the PDE. You know, we always generate the discussion when you talk about a proposed possible tax On, if you open up your budget binder, after a couple colorful pie charts, you'll get into the section of the state budget, page four, page five, page six. Couple of pages there with all kinds of numbers and you input your numbers and the state program calculates the required millage based on your assessed values, your STI market values, STI Business State Tax Equalization Board. And there's common level ratios between all the counties to make numbers comparable. And under section one, you'll see our current, the real estate millage is of course 14.3876 mils in Fayette County, 72.41 mils in Westmoreland County. Now, after inputting the numbers, the state program does its computations. Down at the bottom, it says, you know, based on our proposed real estate tax dollar increase, the, and with those factors in mind, the STI market values, assessed values, so on and so forth, that based on that information, our, our proposed tax increase or new millage for next year would be 14.9900 for Fayette County and 74.6100 for Westmoreland County. Okay? On the next page, under section three, page seven, the crunching of the program goes on and it lists under called index maximums. It calculates the maximum possible real estate millage that we could assess for the next year under Act One. And that would be 15.1705 for Fayette County and 74.8719 for Westmoreland County. So based on the numbers that we have inputted, our projected increase that I had several weeks ago, again, those were rough calculations, we're actually at 14.99 for Fayette, 74.61 for Westmoreland County. So we are under the maximum. And of course, this program crunches out as you see in section four, you know, is the millage rate within the index? Yes, yes. Any tax levy over the, in excess of the index, zero, zero. So of course, you know, we are compliant with going down the Act One track and our actual proposed millage at this time is under the Act One index, not at the maximum. So I guess maybe that is some solace or some good news there. No one wants a tax increase. I understand that. Regarding state subsidies, of course, you know, discussions are continuing at the Commonwealth level, but today Governor Wolf signed into law Act 35 of 2016. And I attached just one page of that legislative report that came out. That's good news. That's good news. You know, the state legislature approved the bipartisan study, the Basic Ed Funding Commission's subsidy funding formula. And they enacted it into law, making it permanent. And of course, permanent until some legislature down the road decides to change it anyway. But that's good news for this upcoming year. What new numbers does that mean for us? I don't know. Funding, based on the, this new proposed formula has not been released yet by PDE. So I know Dr. Molnar and I will be watching that indication. No emails will be coming out telling us, you know, what this would mean for all school districts, not only sophomore, but that is good news. That one of the deadlocks has been resolved and hopefully, this will make, hopefully, this will make passing a budget on June 30th a possibility. Of course, they say in there, you still have a lot of work to do, lots of things to resolve between the leadership, but that is good news. Of course, there will be numerous line item changes before we adopt the final budget. But I wanted to point out some, some items. One item I would like you to act on next week. We got our insurance renewal package. I had a lengthy meeting with our insurance broker, Mr. DeFurio and Mrs. Sistin yesterday. I got a copy of the whole package for renewal. I got a master copy if anybody would like a copy. I'd be glad to give it to you, but I, I included the, the copy of the summary page. Okay? One of the, the good items, well, the whole package, using our current $25,000 property deductible, the whole package comes down $17,580. The significant changes in our workers' compensation renewal. We're going from a premium of this year of $74,294 down to $57,128. And for the first time, I think in, in the history of our district, and Mr. DeFurio, he's been your broker for a long time, he, he can't recall a time when our experience modifier has fallen below 1.0. We are, we have fallen to 0.877. So think of that experience modifiers as one of the key components, obviously, is your projected payroll. And there's factors that go in there and one of the factors is your experience modifier. When your experience modifier is greater than one, think of it as a, you're being charged a premium. So if it's 1.1, you're paying 10% more. In this case, it has gone down from 1.103, I believe it is, all the way down to 0.877. So that is great news. And one of our goals, two years ago, when Dr. Molnar passed the baton to me as the Workplace Safety Director, and one of our goals was to drive that modifier below one. And we are certainly pleased with that. So knock on wood that our, our employees continue to work safely and we can keep that modifier below one. So that is indeed good news to see an insurance renewal where your numbers come down. Now, we have been using $25,000 property deductible for a long time. In fact, one of the first things I, I faced when I came here three years ago, back in May of 2013, that you guys were wrapping up a, a rather costly claim from late summer of 2012 that was over $75,000. And of course, the district had to eat $25,000 of that and we got a check from the insurance company. And I was taken aback by that large deductible. And since then, we've been hit with other property claims. You can remember the late summer of 2013 when we had the flood, the great flood of the field and of course, a lot of arm wrestling there, a lot of pressure on the insurance company. We got that, we got that covered. We got a new field and of course, we ate the $25,000 deductible. And there have been other events that have been less than $25,000 in cost, but we've recovered no money. We've had a few claims over the past two years that we have fought and gotten under the machinery breakdown coverage, which only has a $2500 deductible. So recently, we got like a $13,000 check from a compressor breakdown at the high school and that was good news. One of the things I asked Mr. DeFurio to, to approach the PSBA Insurance Trust is, you know, would they give us a renewal number for lowering our property deductible to $10,000? And they did. And of course, the renewal number on, on the property would go from 102 to $107,000. Bottom line is comparing the totals, you know, our savings would go from $17,580 down to $12,208. So even raising the deductible, I'm sorry, lowering the deductible does have a modest increase in the insurance, but overall, we've still saved money. And I leave that thought with you, which way you would like to see us go. I know from the standpoint of, of the kind of claims that we've, we've seen over the past several years, you know, we have, we have an opportunity to recover more money on losses than, than we've had, but we've survived with 25, so leave that thought with you. Another thought.
A thought that, excuse me, Jim, a thought to add.
Yes.
We have numerous issues with lightning strikes here and that $25,000 deductible, when you pay it and pay it and pay it, it gets a little expensive. So my recommendation would be to go with the lower deductible length, it's well worth. And we've recouped that money in one event. In some years, we have several events, so I would highly recommend that we take James' recommendation.
I know you don't have the information available, but you would know off the top of your head just from memory. Has there ever been a year where we haven't had something? If we have something every year, the first event we have with 1670 budget, we've made money.
Correct. Every year that I've been here. So maybe that's bad luck for me coming here. I don't know.
I'm sure with every.
Yeah, we're always lightning strikes and yeah, things, especially lightning strikes and power surges. So, yeah.
One thing, you know, he did give me a price on, I forgot to put it in my summary, but let's see if I can find it in here. The one thing that we're not covered for, maybe that was just our notes when we were talking, perhaps it's not in here. I would have to talk to Mr. Furio, but off the top of my head, one thing we're not covered for is, you know, this, this new thing, you know, cyber liability, the hacking of, of systems, the loss of, of, you know, important confidential information. Mr. Furio has another school client who, who was hacked and it costs a lot of money to, to clean up that mess. And of course, under the law, you have to notify those people affected. You know, if your credit card information gets stolen, you get all kinds of statements from your credit card company, so on and so forth. We don't have cyber liability in shorts. And he's brought it up the last several seasons and I've kind of pooh-poohed it off. You know, I went ahead this year and gosh darn it. Can't believe I don't have it in here. Must be on my desk or notes from the discussion, but it's around, I hate to say this, it's around $10,000. It possibly could be less to, to provide electronic cyber liability in shorts. Have we had a breach of our, our systems? No. I know Mr. Pushkar and Mr. Smithola work hard to keep our systems safe and secure. So, you know, I throw that thought out there. I can come back next week with the information on that. You know, one item that I didn't agree with years ago, when they added terrorism in shorts coverage. And it's in here and we've been paying for it. And I can remember in, in 2002 or so, going over renewal like this with our insurance broker up in Ligonier and he said, you know, again, the PSBA has terrorism coverage and I recommend that you get it. I'm like, what's going to happen? Scott Dell, Ligonier. I mean, he said, you know, that plane flew over our district when it crashed in Shanksville, PA. And I said, now you've got a good point there. So we added it. Again, what's the chance that, that an event will occur that would come under the definition? And again, the federal government has to declare an official act of terrorism. Some of these things that happened, we might think of it as a terroristic event, but you know, when it's, when it happens by unfortunate sick individual, you know, and these have happened in our area, it's not an official terroristic event. So again, we've been paying for it, it's in there. I won't recommend that it come out, but I just wanted you to know that, that's in there. Cyber liability can be added. Again, is the PSBA and other insurance companies pushing for this? Yes. Have we added it? No. But I throw that out there for, for thought. So perhaps as an administration, we can, you know, discuss that with Mr. Pushkar and those folks. I mean, when you think about it, we have employee data, social security numbers, birth dates. I don't know what's all kept in the student information system on, on the kids, but, well, anyway. So that is good news on the renewal. And I would like, you know, our renewal to be approved next week and, and I do agree with Dr. Molnar's recommendation that we take advantage of lowering our deductible to $10,000.
Mr. Claro has a question.
Jim?
Yes.
Could you explain the optional quotes that you got in the lot there?
Oh. One of the things that I think we need to do, you know, doing our due diligence, is try to seek out other quotes, other, other markets that would be interested in providing a quote. And we don't hit, you know, all the potential insurance companies every year because if you, you keep seeking a quote from them and you keep turning them down, eventually they may say, you know, don't bother us anymore. So last year, we had an, we had a quote from Ohio casually. This year, we approached Liberty Mutual and they did give a quote of $107,000, which is based on the $25,000 deductible. So I certainly don't recommend we change to Liberty Mutual. I do like the, the package quote from the PSBA and we can lower our deductible 107 and still pay what Liberty Mutual would want us to pay with a $25,000 deductible. And we reached out to another company for a workers' quote, which came under our existing premium of 74, but still is above UPMC. And then that's the other good news here. We've, we've changed carriers, which is problematic from a standpoint of, of, you know, our secretary in the office and other people who have to do the forms for, you know, when they get hurt at work. We were with the PSBA Insurance Trust for a number of years and then two years ago, we switched to Highmark to save money. Last year, UPMC, you know, beat their quote, so we switched to UPMC. And now this year, UPMC must, must like us. So they've liked us so much, they've lowered the premium. So we're very happy with that. So we recommend staying with UPMC and with the PSBA Insurance Trust for the rest of the, the coverages. Now, the, the various pieces of the package are placed with certain insurance companies, but the PSBA manages that whole program except for workers' comp, of which we get direct from UPMC.
Jim, are you saying that the Liberty Mutual package, which is down here quoted as $107,052, is only the package that includes property and general liability? It doesn't include terrorism?
No.
School leaders, liability, or student accident? It includes none of those things?
Right. That's correct. That is absolutely correct. One other item I wanted to update on the, the budget. Again, everyone's reviewing it. Things are coming back to me for potential changes. I have secretaries checking some of my, my computations for our potential pension liability, our potential health insurance costs. And I will, I will report on those later, possibly at next week's meeting. But one other significant change is a significant reduction from what I reported on May 17th. If you open up to the big tab, number two, this is copies of our various state subsidy line items. Don't go by the, the one page number that's showing there, but on the third page, so one, two, three, in the middle, you'll see an account number, 10-7505-000-222. Ends with 1670, it's called Ready to Learn Grant for next year. Again, we don't have any real state subsidy numbers yet, but we did get 302,684 this year, so I'm using that same number for next year. Do you see anything other than Bob and Dr. Molnar and Mike Benz, who I communicated this to? Does anybody else see what's wrong with that number? And you know, when I double check my numbers and triple check, my eyes focused on numbers, right? One of the nuances to the program is when you enter revenue numbers, you have to enter them with the negative sign in front of them. That's the programmer's way of handling debits and credits. That's the programmer's way of handling debits and credits. Revenues are a credit item, so in this program, you have to enter them as a negative number. And you'll see that the negative sign is missing from the 302-684. What does that mean when you have an error in addition or subtraction? Well, you take that error, you divide it by two, if it comes out even. Came out even. And I discovered this when inputting my numbers into that state program, because in the state program, you enter all numbers as positive numbers. So the revenue number for the state was coming out to be 16,052,367. When on my spreadsheet, I had 15,447,039. And that's when I subtracted the two numbers, looked at the difference, and divided by two, and I said, oh, wait a minute, that number looks familiar. So our revenues are actually better by 605,368. State revenues, that is, which obviously knocks down the projected operating budget deficit from the negative $2,724,440 down to $2,119,072. So as we were talking at last month's meeting, you know, try to find 272-plus thousand dollars in cuts to eliminate the tax increase. Well, as Ken Al said, you know, I know, Jim, you'll find a magic wand, and you'll make this numbers go away. With one inputting error, thank God, it went the way in favor of me, which would have been really tragic had it gone the other way, but for you. So, you know, yes, I know. So when you make a mistake, you own up to it, and you correct it. As an old boss told me years ago, you know, don't worry about the mistakes that you make that you can fix, worry about the mistakes you make that you can't fix. We've all made mistakes in our lifetime that were both fixable and not fixable. So again, we're not sitting, you know, we're not gonna, you know, sit and rest on our laurels that we found this one big change. We're gonna continue going through the budget, and I'll come back with, you know, the other changes. The vast majority will be reductions in cost estimates. Don't yell if something comes back and we have to increase a line item. And that will, and has happened. But we want to make the budget as accurate as possible and not some piece of fiction that just makes us all happy, but in the end, would make us miserable. So with that, I thank you for allowing me to give you this update. If you have any questions, I may not be prepared to answer them, sitting here, but if you want to think them over and, you know, submit it to me or through our finance chairman, Mr. Clair, certainly be glad to answer them. Thank you. For our last meeting, we were tasked to come up with some options where some cuts could be made. So at our administrative team meeting, we sat and we did a little bit of brainstorming, and we found some areas that are options. And I want to be very clear with you, most of these are not recommendations. All right? We're highly not recommending some of them, but having said that, we were asked to give the board options, so that's exactly what we tried to do here. One of the options we came up with was to redesign cleaning schedules. Restrooms, cafeterias, kitchens could be cleaned daily. Waste receptacles would be emptied daily. Corridors and classrooms would be cleaned every other day. Rough estimate, you could probably eliminate about a third of your custodial hours that way. Would entail, you know, furloughing some people, laying them off. Buildings certainly wouldn't be as clean as we're used to having them by any stretch of the imagination. Lee would have to be in touch with the union to determine who's doing what, when they're doing it. You know, there might be some bumping going on, things of that nature. You know, the one concern I have about this is in, especially at the elementary schools, but the desks are disinfected on a daily basis, right, Lee? So they would not be disinfected on a daily basis, which would impact student health and subsequently attendance, and would have an impact on learning. But again, we were asked to give option, so that's an option that really doesn't impact the instructional program a whole lot, but it's certainly doable. The second option is a recommendation, and it's something that, you know, we can all get on board with. And that's minimizing the use of school security for what we're terming as low-risk events, especially when parking is an issue. These events might include most middle school athletic and academic events, you know, when we don't necessarily need two security guards for the middle school girls volleyball game, although they can get kind of rowdy, we'll give you that, but I don't think we need two guards here to, you know, keep things under control there. We don't even need one, as a matter of fact. You know, we can certainly cut back on those items. I just took a wild guess here, at 60 events, probably a little more than that, Charlie, am I correct? Two security people for four hours at $9 an hour. If we were to not have security at 60 of those events, $2,200 would be our savings. Again, that's not significant, but again, pennies make dollars. So that's something we could do. We could also, on some of our varsity-type events, we could have a few less security people there. We always have at least one administrator there, sometimes two or three. So there seems to be a bit of a duplication there, so we'd certainly cut back on some of those hours as well. And Charlie already has a plan in place where that can be made to happen. We could possibly, and Charlie started to work on this already as well, eliminate one or more bus runs. We looked at this a couple of years ago, it wasn't really feasible at that time, but populations change, concentrations change, and it may be doable. The upside to that is we're putting more miles on one bus, and therefore, the state reimbursement for that bus increases without having the cost of an additional bus. The downside is, kids are gonna be on buses longer, and then parents are unhappy, and they, you know, bus stops get eliminated sometimes. I believe we can make elementary kids walk up to a mile and a half, and high school kids can walk two miles to a bus stop. You certainly wouldn't want to stretch to that limit by any means, but, you know, we could eliminate some stops, and that would save, what's run, one run is about 40 grand, right?
Bush's?
About 50 grand. So very bus we eliminate, it's about $50,000. I'm not sure if that's doable or not, but it's something that I've asked Charlie and Laurie to explore. But again, we'll have some unhappy people here telling us that their child is on a bus for longer than they used to be, and they're not getting home till maybe quarter to five instead of 4:30 or 4:15. So that's an option that's certainly out there for you to think about. This one is one that's an option, we're not recommending these, but they are options. Could eliminate one phys ed teacher at the middle school and combine phys ed classes. Right now, you have two phys ed teachers and two classes going on at the same time. That would mean you would have one teacher with about 50 students doing phys ed, and we would have to figure out locker room supervision for one of the genders, depending on who that middle school teacher would be. It certainly isn't quality phys ed. You know, with that many people under the supervision of one teacher, it's not the safest option, but we thought that would be an annual savings of about $65,000. We'd do the same thing at the elementary school. A one phys ed teacher could, would cover all the elementary schools. Students would either be in larger classes by combining classes, which is, again, a bit of an issue, especially with younger kids. They require a little more supervision. Or if that didn't happen, the elementary people would have to do some very creative scheduling, because right now, the itinerant schedule of phys ed art, music teachers are the individuals that are with kids while our teaming is going on, while our teachers are working on curriculum and assessment and those kinds of things, which is mission-critical to what we're doing here. So that elimination would create a bit of a problem there. So again, we're not recommending it, but we were asked to provide options, so that's an option. An option that we also thought about is providing PE credit for students who participate in sports at the high school level, junior varsity and varsity level. So we would have less students taking phys ed class per se. If our numbers in athletics were high enough, that would eliminate the need to have two phys ed teachers at the high school, maybe one or one and a half. Again, locker room supervision becomes an issue, some bad things happen in unsupervised locker rooms. So we would have to have an aide or a secretary or a principal or a teacher who's on their prep period duck into a locker room during those changing periods. Or eliminate the locker room, and everybody takes phys ed and the street clothes. You know, so there's certainly not an ideal situation, but it comes a point, you know, where you cut so much before you start impacting the quality of what you're doing. And what I'm sharing with you here is an impact in quality. I'll talk to you a little bit about our little study here that we try to keep up with, you know, in terms of the cuts that we've already made. So that's an option. Elementary instrumental music, it's not required by any stretch of the imagination. You had an example at our last meeting of what our instrumental music program looks like, that we could start them in sixth grade instead of fifth. A lot of schools starting fourth, by the way, but we could start them in sixth grade. That would eliminate an elementary instrumental music teacher, and it would also minimize the number of lessons that can be given during the school day to kids in grades six through eight, because Mr. Murray would have an extra grade level that he's providing music, instrumental music instruction to, but that's another 65 that you could save there. I am a big proponent of music, so I don't recommend that at all. Can eliminate the nurse at SPC. She's not protected by the association, she's a nursing assistant, and that would save you about $40,000. That would mean the high school nurse travels between the two buildings. Again, we have, you know, kids with severe diet needs, we have kids who are diabetic, we have an autistic support class over there with some medically fragile kids. Not a recommendation, but it's an option. You know, the law requires a certain number of nurses per student, I think it's 900. So we could probably get by with two nurses, might even be higher than that. Is that ideal? No. Would I send my kid to that school without a nurse? No. But it's an option. Elimination of some of all the middle school athletic programs, and we don't, you know, we believe in student engagement, we think it's really important, we think it keeps kids interested, it prepares kids for varsity sports, but again, eliminate those positions. I didn't go through and cost that out, that's a lot of supplemental contracts that could very easily go away, or you would save you a sum of money. And again, some of the high school sports could also go away. The only thing we have to watch is our Title IX, so we providing an equal number of boys' sports and girls' sports. And student engagement, what keeps kids interested in school, what keeps them part of the community, what keeps them out of trouble. There, you know, so much research is out there on why extracurriculars are important. But again, option, not a recommendation. We recommend against it, but it is an option. This one, we thought was kind of interesting. Many schools have foundations. We could have a Scotty Foundation, or, you know, benefactors could donate to, people could leave money in wills, whatever the case may be, build up a nice sum of money that's invested appropriately, and then on an annual basis, some of that money can be distributed to help offset the cost for upgrading football helmets or providing field trips or some of the other things that we do that are now coming out of general fund monies. I would be willing to work on that, to have a foundation such as that would require a board of directors and bylaws, and, you know, it would be a legal corporation of sorts. But again, many districts have them. I know Latrobe has a really, really nice one that provides a lot of stuff for the Latrobe area school district. Their demographic is somewhat different than ours in terms of people's ability to contribute to it. But having said that, there's some money here in town as well.
I think the Crowe's, that's one too.
Yes, the Falcon Foundation, right? The Falcon Foundation, I think they call it, yeah.
I mean, I know that their income level and things like that are more similar to ours than Latrobe, but I do know that they've gotten some nice things donated, and they've done very well with it.
I think this is, this one's not given to you as an option, but a recommendation. I think that's a really good idea.
Sheller.
To offset some things, pardon?
I think Sheller and they have one.
I think they do. A lot of districts do. A lot of districts do. Franklin Regional has one, Kiskie has one, you just told me Conalsville does. That's something that we'd like to explore. Elimination of what I call de minimis morning refreshments, when we have our big in-service at the beginning of the year, and all the teachers are in the auditorium, and then they get their introduction to the year. Usually provide coffee and bagels and fruit, about $775. Again, you know, it's just something we can do nice, it's kind of a morale booster, but we're not recommending that, but it's an option. Have to give Lynn Huggins credit for this one. The food service department is not a part of the budget. The food service department operates independently of the school district. They're called a fiduciary account, Jim, is that what it's called?
It's called a proprietary.
A proprietary account, so they're on their own. And I can remember years and years ago, and Cheryl, you were on the board at that time, might be the only person that was on the board at that time, where every year, the food service department would come and say, "School Board, we're broke. We need you to contribute $50,000 to keep us afloat." We're no longer in that situation. Lynn does a fantastic job of managing our department in a cost-effective way. They're able to purchase their own equipment, their own, when it breaks down, they purchase the van out of their funds. We can charge them for certain things as a district, their share of the garbage removal, their share of copier use, their share of postage. It's called indirect costs. Is it a big sum of money? Absolutely not. But pennies make dollars. Would be a matter of doing some bookkeeping, and when food service takes care of the breakfast for the staff, the general fund gets a bill. So when food service has their garbage emptied, they would get a bill, you know, for their share of the trash hauling. So indirect costs. So again, not a large sum.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
Just the kind of, like, things that they're able to buy and provide, even though it's a proprietary, the things that they've been able to buy, like...
I'm not hearing you because of the rain, I'm sorry.
The things, that's for the, the things that they would be, have been able to buy, like with equipment and things like that or other things, I'm saying, wouldn't that just sort of be almost like a wash? Because...
Well, what they purchase doesn't impact your general fund budget, it doesn't impact your need to raise taxes. They're running a business of their own that the district owns.
Yeah, right. But what I'm saying is, would we have to then go back to giving them money like we used to to replace...
Yeah, Lynn tells me, Lynn tells me they can sustain this for at least a period of time.
Oh, okay. Okay. Because, yeah, that's great, because like I said, like you said, we used that, they give them money every year.
Right. And we're not doing that anymore. And again, you know, what would their share of copier be? What would their share of the trash removal be, their share of custodial services? Not much. You know, but again, it's a little bit. The next thought we have was, and Jim actually came up with this one, looking at our 707, again, and I know this is a, every two year, every two years, we kind of tweak 707, and depending on who's on the board and who's squeaking in the public, we, it either goes this way like a pendulum or this way like a pendulum, but 707 events do cost the districts some money. But many of the events that are costing us money are being hosted by groups that support our students or our teams by giving them money that we would otherwise have to give them. So, you know, you pay a little bit under 707, or you pay a lot to fund all the field trips at SES or whatever the case may be. You know, but again, that bears looking at, because there may be some organizations who don't give a whole lot back to the district that we're spending... that, that we're spending a little bit of money on. So we thought an examination of 707 might be prudent and frugal. And I know Mike, you had actually talked about looking at it as well. Brought that up a month or two ago. So, you know, we're, we're in agreement with that. Another thought we had is just approaching our booster organizations to see if they might be able to kick in for some of the assistant coaches. I know that the band boosters, I think, already pay for a couple of instructors. I think the football boosters pay for an assistant coach, but some of the other teams may, may be able to do that. Wrestling team, you know, I don't know if they would or not, because they provide us with math that we own. You know, they buy those kinds of things for us. So, you know, we get a lot of benefit from them, but it doesn't hurt to throw some feelers out and put and save a few supplementals that way. That's a possibility. So we, we like that idea. That, that comes under a recommendation. Solicite advertisements and sponsorships at athletic venues and possibly in school buses. We broached this topic a couple of years ago and David thought that it might be a First Amendment issue. But other districts are doing it. There are companies out there that manage it. And, you know, I think it's something we need to revisit, you know, if we can, we can sell some advertising on the fence at the stadium. Charlie, you want to talk a little bit about, you, you had spoken with a company with the scoreboard yesterday? I don't remember, I don't know all the details as well as Charlie does, but this was substantial.
You notice, we went to, you know, we go to quite a few events and a lot of the schools are doing this. Obviously, like we talked about the boards that we were looking to update in the gym, they're like eight thousand dollars. Through these companies, they come to you and they actually have a proposal that you can look at. They'll, you actually tell them, like, people in your businesses in your area that you think are local that might want to do it, and they actually do most of the work for you. But what they'll do is they'll go out and they'll ask these people if they're interested in sponsoring your school. They come up with a design. They present it to us. The board or whoever can look at it. You approve it, make sure it's something that you think's worth, you know, appropriate to put up. And then they go into a contract with these people. They'll provide us with, just right now, this company came. They want to give us two new scoreboards in the gym with the stat panels, all for nothing. Well, they'll get the sponsorships. And then after a couple of years, I think it's three to four years, they give us like twenty-five percent of the income. After everything's paid for through their sponsorship, we start getting fifty to sixty percent of the income coming into us that you can put towards athletics or whatever you want to do. But the thing about it is updating your facilities, I mean, it's a way to stop really asking the public or, you know, always going to your fund balance or whatever. It's just an option. You know, we see it at a lot of schools. We were at Waynesburg last year, the new scoreboard. This guy actually approached me on it. They're, I think they're down at Albert Gout now. They're hitting a lot of the Green County schools where obviously, you know, the funds there are going through the issues with monies as well. So it's something to look at. I think it's something we should, you know, talk about or maybe consider. The stadium's another option. You know, they'll give you those digital boards that you can put on top of the stadium, you know, bleached or the scoreboard, and you can change advertisers really with just a computer. And each one that you get, you get, you know, money down the road or a possibility of money coming in. And it's a way to update your, you know, your equipment without really putting out a lot of expense.
And our scoreboards aren't getting any younger.
Yeah, right. And I think we talked or we looked at, isn't the lights on the scoreboard that are dimming out down at the stadium, to replace those are over eight thousand dollars? Just to put in the bulbs. It's nothing else. So there's a way to do, you know, to maybe get some better equipment. But I mean, obviously, we got to go check it out and make sure it's what we want to do.
Right. So that was an option we thought about. I'm not sure I want to put ads inside our school buses for Twizzlers or whatever, you know. There are districts that do that. I'm not sure I want to go there. But for public venues or gymnasiums or football stadium, why not?
We have the home run fence at Softball Field, this football...
Exactly. The home run fence, I forgot about that one. But yeah. The soccer field up here in town, if the ordinances would permit it. And then the last one, which is, is absolutely not a recommendation, but it's an option. You know, we spend a good deal of money every year on after-school tutoring and the associated transportation that goes with it. It gets kids here for the additional time and support. That additional time and support, we believe is a big contributor in why we have that number one on our website for the most overachieving school district in, in the region and number four in the state. Somebody passed us up that would annoy me. But, you know, that, that's a curricular support program, but, but it does cost money. So that was sixteen, sixteen options. We were tasked with, with that. I have those here written down, which I'll send around to you. And I, I put my introduction here starts out, "I want to be very clear with you. These are not recommendations. They are options only and at very approximate dollar amounts attached to some of them. More accurate estimates will be provided at June ninth for any option that you're interested in exploring." So if you have one here that really, you know, rang a bell with you, you know, we can certainly cost that outing in a more accurate manner. Yes, Jim? Or Bob?
The one, the option that you gave regarding, like, getting credit for your athletics and thereby not having to take gym classes and eliminating there. And I guess the other ones for the elimination of a PE teacher in middle school and one in the elementary school. A lot of what you seem to say there was, it's all, it's a matter of, as much a matter of supervision as it is of the actual instruction.
No. I may have emphasized that because safety's pretty important to me, especially when we're talking about our insurance. But it's instruction as well. You know, there, there's a lot of teaching goes on in physical education classes. The middle school operates a program called Sport and deals with becoming life, active in a lifelong way. In our elementary schools, phys ed teachers are doing things that actually dovetail with the three Rs in the curriculum. So the, the numbers are important. The numbers are important. You know, it's, I can remember going to school and, you know, we had eighty kids and they gave us a bunch of basketballs and says, "Go to town." Those days are over. Phys ed is, is an important curriculum and there's a lot of teaching that goes on. So if I, if I gave you that impression, I apologize.
I'm not, I'm not so much thinking about, I'm thinking more from the aspect of students that are already involved in athletics. I go back to the many, many years ago when we had PE class, if in fact, we had a sporting event that day, we had a track meet or something else, we didn't have to take gym class. And again, a lot of times we would say, gee, why do we take gym class at all? We're involved in three sports through every season. Why are we taking gym class? It's certainly not for the physical activity. And so that one particularly, I was curious if, if that's an issue, not so much, because that would decrease the number of students that you'd actually have.
Right.
And, but again, if supervision is an issue there, I guess my question is, do we have to have a, a teacher available? I mean, do we have to have our classes, so we need an extra teacher? Or can we have someone else that doesn't, that isn't a teacher if it's a matter of supervision and having somebody else? Does it have to be a teacher?
Supervision, I was thinking about locker room supervision.
That's what I'm talking about. And again, right, so...
I need, I need an adult.
Right. But again, it doesn't have to be a teacher. So, so we could eliminate a teacher's salary at, certainly at the high school level by eliminating, if we could eliminate enough students that are currently in athletic events, participating in sports, you might be able to eliminate enough to eliminate a teacher, but supervision might still be a little bit of a problem. You would still have to maybe hire someone to handle that particular aspect of it, but that wouldn't be the same as a teacher's salary.
Or hire someone or reassign. Dan, you can speak to that better than I can, so I'll let you elaborate a little bit. We're talking about your, your notion, you want to hit the microphone? We're talking about your notion of student athletes being exempted from PE classes. And, you know, the two, one issue there is obviously we might be able, depending on the numbers, we do some teacher, we'd still have to have a locker room supervisor of some kind for the opposite gender. And then the third issue is, you know, those kids need to go somewhere, so they're going to go, you know, art or social studies or some electra, you know, which, you know, so they can be absorbed somewhere. But do you want to elaborate a little on that? Because I mean, you talked about it yesterday at the meeting.
Right. There, there are some districts that have explored and have put those policies into place. But it's not as simple as stated, move three hundred kids and they, they vanish. They're going to be in the study hall, which also is going to require supervision. Locker room coverages will require teachers to be involved. However, it could reduce the sizes because quite frankly, the gym classes at the high school right now are already very large. If you figure, on average, a classroom teacher may have a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five students. My two gym teachers, if you divide by a school in half, have roughly three hundred and ten students apiece.
Just to interrupt you a little bit, not too many years ago, there were three phys ed teachers at the high school. Now there are two. Yeah, go ahead, Dan. I'm sorry.
Well, and eight years ago, there were four. So it, it would not be a simple swap, although it would reduce sizes and give us an option. And it may actually increase participation in other athletic events.
One of the things I'm thinking there also is that that free time, obviously you have to put them someplace, but we already using free time in students that either need to have additional instruction, which would give them additional time to have that without eating into another part of their day, or those that are already, that you want to give, that are more advanced, that you want to give them more advanced, they would have more free time to do that.
Maybe, because that additional instruction normally appears during a specified time of the day. So if teachers are teaching core subject areas and there's no one there to give them the additional tutoring, but I, I don't have a problem.
It would require scheduling, no doubt.
But having said that, the last thing I want to do is put them in a study hall.
Right, I agree.
I want to put them in, in a STEM class. I want to put them in an art class, an additional math class. You know, the, we're, we're about learning here. We're not about warehousing.
No, exactly. Yeah. That's what I'm saying. I mean, I think...
I don't want to do anything to give anybody the impression that we want to eliminate, you know, half of our phys ed, the kids from phys ed class so we can warehouse them in the cafeteria so they can put their heads down and snore. You know, that's, that's more opposed to that than I can describe.
And I agree. I'm just saying that we, we went over early on this year about how we use so many hours each week for the students to either improve their skills or to advance. And again, this certainly would free up those hours. How you actually allocate that time, again, would be logistics. But again, it still would give you the free time to do that. Okay.
I have a question, I have a question for Dan.
Yes.
If a student plays one sport, would that mean they would be exempt from phys ed the whole year? Every day after, play through all, all seasons?
Well, I, I think that's where the devil's in the details. And I think more exploration would need to, to be looked at to see, you know, then what, what does it qualify? I know in some of the parochial schools that do not have PE programs, you know, there's things like karate and outside activities that are exempting. Does, you, you posed the question, does, does participation in marching band, will that fulfill the requirement? And it really, I think it's, would have to be explored more carefully to see what the poli, and policy and procedures that would have to be in place.
And the other thing is, you know, we, we have students who are involved year-round in gymnastics, dance, things that are not sponsored by us. And I know my own daughter was a competitive gymnast and the requirement in her phys ed class was to do ten pull-ups. And when she got to seventy-five, they stopped her. And she didn't need to be learning. She, she did all that stuff outside of school. So we, we have a lot of kids in that boat here who are, who are taking high school phys ed classes. So we, we, we kind of outlined some ideas here. If there are ideas that, that you're interested in pursuing, you know, that's when we would obviously, you know, start to look, look more closely. Cheryl?
I was just going to ask, does the Department of Education give you guidelines as to what counts as whatever?
Yeah, there are chapter four guidelines, yeah.
Yeah, fourth phys ed.
Do they have to have physical education, so many credits to graduate?
Currently, yeah, you have to have it.
The Howard Disco, the deputy legally, is done as a sport instead of a physical education class?
Well, I don't think that it would exempt them from having, I think credit hours would have to still be awarded based on whatever you participate in.
In other words, you're playing on the football team starting in mid-August through, you know, the end of October, first of November.
I mean, that would credit them by playing football.
That might, that might give you part of a credit, you know, half a credit or quarter credit or whatever the case may be.
As long as they don't come short on it.
Yeah. And, and as I said, though, I know one of the local districts that, that does this, I don't, I'm not sure that they do anymore. One time a local district did this. They had a, a really detailed plan that spelled out what everything, how everything worked. It wasn't just, you participated, okay. You don't have to take gym. It was, they, they had it laid out pretty specifically.
Obviously, we would have to do the same thing in a developed program. Dan?
Other things to consider, play one sport, it's a water sport, you're going to be for not weeks of PE or something, so you're going to be having a blended situation where you're in fall versus not weeks, or the second of the weeks, you're getting to get the ball, that's the ball. And I'd make the week three throws, it's yours, right? I'm going to check it out. Credit, and then I'm back to make class. So the scheduling and logistics are that complicated. You have a three-sport learner, okay, great. But if you're not, you're moving an hour of courses.
Except that again, and again, it would depend on how you had to do this. I don't know what the regulations are. But just because I didn't participate in a sport that overlapped with another semester would mean I couldn't get credit. Obviously, if I'm going to practice every single day playing basketball, that's more gym class than I'm getting. So I'm going to get a lot more practice. So why couldn't that carry over and say, that's the whole semester's work?
Right, so you're counting the practices.
Right.
Counting the hours, yeah.
And that's what you have to do. Right, yeah.
Right.
Anyone else? Does anyone want to recommend anything for information?
Is there anything that really got you excited here that you want us to look at? And there, there are, obviously, like I told you, the foundation is something that we're interested in looking at. Is anyone interested in, in looking at, we can just go down the list of the custodial options?
So, yeah, I think it's good to look at the elimination of bus run if you can do that. I mean, and see what it, how effect, what effect it would have on the business, how long are we dealing with them? Here on the bus, is it ten minutes? Is it a half hour? You know, what do we deal with if we eliminate one bus run?
Yeah. Let's just go down in order here. I didn't hear any interest for number one. Number two, the security force for low-risk activities. I'm quite comfortable with that. I can't speak for the board. All right, so we'll, we'll try to cost, cost that out a little bit. The bus run, Mr. Polaro was interested in. And we'll see what the ramifications are there, you know. Charlie, you have the technology to figure that out. Anyone interested in eliminating phys ed positions at this point? Instrumental music. Seeing heads go back and forth and not up and down, so that's fine. Nursing position at SPC. Middle school athletics. The Scotty Foundation, I'm going to say yes to that. I think that's something that could, could really enhance our programming. You want to eliminate donuts? Okay. You want to bill Lynn for indirect costs? Okay, you want to look at 707? Do you want to approach some booster organizations to see if they might want to kick in and help us out a little bit? Better yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Sponsorships.
Yes.
I think it's a big, I think that's a big one we ought to really look at. The advertisements, stuff like that. That is a big, it's a big program. And it really is a suc- successful in other schools.
Right. And after-school tutoring.
The only problem with which is you only have to be careful, if we were, and you can bring a lot of money in on children to advertise them. You just have to be careful if it doesn't turn into a thing where, well, we can, we can have solid gold everything because we now have advertising money as opposed to saying...
No, no, you use it accordingly to what you need it for. You don't just go crazy.
Yeah, not, not so high in the sky. Yeah, not all the pie in the sky starts, you guys say, you can certainly get into that, if you could get enough money raised, it would be, your athletic programs would turn into a, like I said...
Or after a few years, you can use it for whatever you want to.
Right, right, once you, once you start earning the money, that's true.
I mean, just like the lights on the, on the football field, you're looking at a pile of money, where if they come in here and they get enough to do that the first couple of years, it's eliminating a big expense.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
In federal programs, we have a rule, federal programs have to supplement, not supplant, so that means federal monies, you have to be used for things over and above, this money will be supplant, not supplement.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mash.
From previous experience, you have to be really careful when you get advertisers because it doesn't go against your values of your district, because there are some companies that might present something on the exterior, but really here or support something that is not supporting your core values, so you got to really be careful with the advertising and that also.
Well, I don't think, I think in most of those organizations, they give the school or the ownership, their right to approve.
Right.
Who they do, at least, those are some of the ones that we've looked at in college.
What we ought to do is really check into it, see where we stand.
Yeah.
And then go from there.
People you're saying, especially that, just because they may have a nice clean advertiser, doesn't mean the company stands for the thing that you want to be known for, which is behind the scenes, has nothing to do with what we actually see on scoreboards or on fences.
Right, so we're advertising granola bars, but we support terrorism with our profits, yeah, those kinds of things.
Anyone else? Seeing none.
The last thing, I'm with Charlie on the spot here, but I did ask Charlie if he'd just talk a little bit about how our spring sports finished up, give you a report there, we'll be meeting with coaches within the next week or so.
Yeah, overall, the spring season was pretty successful. Our girls softball team made a trip to the WPILs again, they were second in the section with Yawk winning it, a very good game between the girls, actually did beat them, but they ended up going to, they played Central Valley in the first round playoff, they beat them in overtime, and then they lost to Mount Pleasant in the semis, and Mount Pleasant is actually in the finals. Our section this year was probably one of the toughest, Yawk, Mount Pleasant, and ourselves, I think all three of us could have been in the finals had they put us in the right brackets, but unfortunately, we lost that game, but now we hopefully, Mount Pleasant pulls that out because it makes our section look strong, too. Track, we had four, four kids go to the States, Veda Farino, Kaylee Farino, Nick Hyde is a freshman, which he did an outstanding job as well, and Ben Bickerton, Ben Bickerton was the one that placed, he placed eighth, brought home a medal, had a nice run in the two miles. So the boys and girls track team both finished second in the section, went on to the playoffs, represented Southmore very well, all had a real good season. Baseball struggled a little bit this year, we're hopefully rebuilding that program with some of the kids in the middle school, but they ended up, you know, I think they ended up had two or three wins this year, which was a tough season. Tennis, boys tennis over the past years, I was talking to Jim, since he's been there, the tennis team's been 66 and 15 overall in their record, and this year was no exception, they were like nine and three or nine and four, another very good year. They're in a very tough section with a couple Pittsburgh schools, South Park and TJ that are big tennis schools, but they, boys did well, and with that, like I said, they've had four section championships in the last six years, so he's got a nice program going there as well. Again, I congratulate all the kids and the coaches and the parents that helped out this year. Like I said, the spring was very successful, and there was really no issues to complain, you know, speak of, and I think all the kids represented us well.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
That's all I have for public.
Any board members have anything for public? Motion to adjourn to executive session for personnel.
Tax litigation for Spirit SP portfolio number 3735 in 2008 GD Fayette County.
Any motion, please? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second of Mr. Porcoste. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to one, I'm sorry, seven and two, absent.
This is only three public events to hear, please.